Holly, you want to go over the agenda? Anna, of course, please.
Yeah. Well, first, we will approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Is there any additions or corrections to the meeting's minutes from last time? I have a motion to approve them. So moved.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
Okay, and then we have, we have three public hearings tonight. I'm going to change the order a little bit just to make it more challenging for you, Commissioner Minow. We're going to start with the Mayo Clinic Conditional Use Permit, which is the third item on our agenda. This is to consider a petition for the amendment of an existing conditional use permit from Mayo Clinic Health System to add, and this is probably an error. It's not exactly adding a two-story addition above the second and third floors. That was in the application. It's actually, well, they'll explain, but it's more of an addition extending the second and third floors. Is that, yeah, okay. I will just go over the backup information to give you an introduction, and then I'll have the representatives from Mayo explain the project a little bit. The area that we're talking about is where the Mayo Clinic Health System in Austin is located, the 1,000 First Drive Northwest. The area is currently zoned R2 multi-family residential district, which is why they are required to have a conditional use permit and to go through amendments whenever anything is changed at that location. The areas surrounding that location to the north is RO, multi-family residential office district. To the east is B2 Community Business District, and the west and the south are multi-family residential districts. The present land use is a hospital and clinic. The hospital was established approximately 1949. And the, since 1988, the city of Austin has been, implemented the conditional use permit process, and they've granted numerous amendments to existing permits as the petitioner added various buildings and site developments and expansions. The city code 11.31 subdivision 3A and C do allow medical clinics, including offices of physicians, surgeons, et cetera, as a conditional use in an R1 and R2 district. When you consider a conditional use permit under 11.56 subdivision 1, you should consider whether the use would create an excessive burden on existing parks, schools, streets, and other public facilities and utilities, whether the use would be sufficiently compatible or separated by distance sensor screening from adjacent agricultural residentially-zoned use, land uses. And that homes would be not, would not be depreciated in value if there's, essentially, that homes would not be depreciated in value. That the structure and site will have an appearance that will not have an adverse effect upon adjacent residential properties. That the use, in the opinion of the Planning Commission, is reasonably related to the overall needs of the city and existing land use. That the use is consistent with the purposes of our zoning chapter and purposes of zoning district. And that's the information I went over earlier. That the use will not cause traffic hazard or congestion. Existing businesses nearby will not be adversely affected because of curtailment of customer trade by a broad about, by any kind of nuisance. That the use would not result, again, in, or any destruction of natural features. And then other considerations kind of repeat some of those that were already mentioned, that you consider the geographical area involved, whether the use would depreciate the surrounding area, character of surrounding use, demonstrated need for the use, and again, whether there would be any nuisance involved with that use. There is a PowerPoint included in your presentation, or in your materials, and at this point, I will just turn, turn this over to, can you? Bill, who is from the architectural firm that designed the addition, and he'll describe the project in more detail and go through the PowerPoint.
Can you give us your name and residence, please?
Yes, my name is Bill Steed. I'm an architect with Kaler Slater, and I live in Madison, Wisconsin, representing the Mayo Clinic Health System for this project.
Thank you.
And I have a relatively short PowerPoint. If there are any questions, feel free to ask them as we go through it. I hope to give you a brief description of what the project entails and use the slides to help you understand. This is a picture of our three floors that will be affected by this project. The first floor does not have a building addition to it, but we are proposing to build a garden wall to hide some of our mechanical units that are out there in the front of the building near our entryway. There's an electrical transformer and an air handling unit. So the garden wall and the two-story addition that is above the first floor, so adding on to the second floor and the third floor, are all designed to tie into the architectural language of these, of the new clinic, the newer clinic part of the hospital. Sort of bringing up the appearance of the 1970s building that is there originally. The main program for this project is to improve the inpatient care environment. So on the second floor, the addition is for our inpatient bedrooms. What we're doing inside in the renovation is creating all private rooms for our patients. Currently, there are semi-private rooms. So we're not increasing the number of beds or the license of beds or the number of patients. We're creating a better environment, a private room. In addition, on the third floor, our Family Birth Center is creating large labor delivery, recovery, and postpartum rooms, LDRPs. This is a new model of care. It's a preferred model of care for many of our patients to birth and recover in the same room. So LDRPs are being created on the third floor. There will be 10 of these rooms along with the C-section room, so a new state-of-the-art birthing facility. The addition, which is out on the front of the building, is actually over what used to be the back of the building, so interesting history on the campus. It includes a link from the new clinic lobby elevators up to the second floor and the third floor. So we're improving wayfinding with this project by allowing our patients to find their way, and our families, more importantly, to find their way through the vestibule up to the second and third floors, right into those two renovated units. So from the exterior, this image shows on the left our two-story building addition. I don't know if I have my pointer, and you guys are all looking at your screens anyway, so that probably isn't going to help. So on the left and at the first floor, you'll see a screen wall, a garden wall. Again, this is there to hide some of the mechanical units and some of the old appearance of the building to create this garden at our new parking stalls. Then on the second floor, we're putting in about a 3,400 square foot addition approximately, and then renovating the entire unit for the medical surgical patients. And then on the third floor, it's the Family Birth Center. Again, a very similar addition with a connector link back to the lobby and to the elevators. This is an image that shows the clinic in the background and the addition in the foreground. As we turn the corner on the 1970s vintage hospital, you know, that's all going to remain as it is today. But out in front will be the precast concrete to match the clinic, the window patterns, the scale, the height of the parapet, all to tie in with the existing front door. So it's going to have more of a unifying appearance for the entire campus and for the front door of the hospital. These are some other views of walking around the parking lots to give you a good feel for the three-dimensional. On the upper top-left image, you'll see the clinic to the right and the new addition to the left. And then you can sort of find your way around just to give you different views from the walking position. We have included a site plan. There is going to be an improved sidewalk where we're building the garden wall. This is going to be a wider sidewalk, a little more safety. It does end up reducing our parking stalls by one. But we think that's a good accommodation because it's actually going to be a safer sidewalk right at our front door because it'll be wider for some of our wheelchair traffic and some of our frail elderly. We've also included a landscape plan. Our project does impact our, our subterranean garden that exists at the front door because we have to put a couple of columns into that space for our connecting link. So we've included the landscape details with the retaining walls. Pretty much the design concept of the landscape is to match what's there today. We're keeping the statue and the lighting that's up there right now currently, just replacing it. That's the information we have for you tonight. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
And I would just add, too, that we did send out notices to the public. I did not personally receive any responses back, but one of our commissioners did receive some responses with concerns about prior projects that they felt were not completed as promised. I know that we had talked to this individual at length, and the city does not feel the same way as the resident does, but just wanted to let you know that that was received.
So this shouldn't affect your parking needs at all?
Correct. We're not increasing the number of beds. It's all an inpatient renovation project. Rather, what we're doing is rightsizing them, getting in a more contemporary environment for the health care of our community.
Does it change the overall footprint of the building?
It does not. I say that with, you know, the explanation that we are doing a garden wall, but that's really not a building footprint. That's more of a fence or a garden wall. So that is out in front, but no occupied space is being added to the first floor.
Are there any other questions?
I think, so I had just added a couple of items about things that have come up in the past with regard to maybe the traffic on the street and accommodating the construction project. If you could talk a little bit about how that would be done, if you, if you have that information?
Sure. We're working with a contractor, Knudsen, who's done a lot of hospital projects and in fact, did the clinic building addition back in 2011, 2012. They're well versed with what the city expects from the building department, from your inspectors, and will be using sort of, I guess I would call it, back-of-house entries into the site. And they will need a place to park some of their vehicles and load some of the equipment, especially as the precast panels are coming off. But we'll, we'll try to stay as far away from the front door and the main street as possible. If the city has any recommendations for us, we'd be happy to listen to them and I'll work with the city whenever any issues come up.
What's the timeline for the project?
We're very close to being ready to start. So the project, though, has some steel that has to get ordered, so that's, that's a long lead item, HVAC. The interior renovations are going to be on two floors, but four to six rooms at a time. So it's going to be quite a long process as we renovate on the inside. Hopefully, we see the shell and core of the building go up pretty quick.
If there's no further questions, is there any questions from the public that anybody else would like to address the planning commission? If not, could I entertain a motion?
I'll just add one thing in. So I had put staff conditions here, but really, it just was something that I wanted to inquire about with regard to the construction. And I don't know that this is something, this is something that we would work with the petitioner on as they do the project. But if you want to add anything about minimizing interruptions of street traffic or accommodating off-street parking, that's, that would be fine as well.
And this would be?
And this is a final decision of the planning commission.
Just to get concerned, all the unloading will be within our parking lot, so there won't be any off-street effect of the trucks coming in but back into the, it'll be on the east side of that building. Northeast corner of the, yeah, northeast corner of the building.
Could you go up to the podium and address your name and address?
I'm sorry. Tim Schneider, Austin, Minnesota, 6028th Avenue Southeast. I'm Facilities Manager at the hospital. So if you look at the plan, you can see where that, the drive, that box they got basically drawn in there extends straight out to the north. And that'll be the construction area. So the drive, if you know the parking at the hospital, they got that lane that goes right along the ER garage. The north end of that, we're going to shut down. And then where the handicap parking, we're going to move that out a little further for the time being. And that'll be where all the construction zoning will come out of. So it shouldn't really affect any of the off-street stuff. It's all off-street, so.
It's pretty much right in the center of the property.
It is right, right in the middle of our property, exactly. So, thank you.
Any other, if there's no further questions? Could I have a motion, please?
If I can make a recommendation, it would just be to grant a conditional use permit, either approve or deny for the project as described.
I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit as described in the documentation here.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion approved.
All right. Thank you for coming. Oh, here, do you need some? Yeah, Bill, do you got it? Thank you for coming.
Okay.
All right. Our second matter will be to consider a petition for a conditional use permit from Precision Signs on behalf of Austin Marketplace for a sign located along the Interstate 90 at approximately 1,016th Avenue Northwest to accommodate existing and potentially new retail stores that... The petitioner is Slavian Associates out of Verona, Wisconsin. The actual area is not on their property. It's an easement area on Hy-Vee's property. They've executed an easement agreement for that location, specifically for the sign. The petitioner, the, so they're essentially erecting a freeway-oriented sign in a B2 Community Business District, which is described in our Section 4.50 Schedule 4. And that requires a conditional use permit. The, along an area highway where the speed limit is in excess of 45 miles per hour. The area to the north of the property, trying to, actually, to the south, is the interstate. So this is not quite correct here. The north is additional business, B2 District. And west and east, actually, to the east is R2 multi-family apartment building. And to the west is basically the retention pond behind Hy-Vee. The conditional use permit requirements are the same as we just went through for the Mayo project. Does anybody want me to go through those again? Okay. The particular project here, the sign will be 35, if I'm wrong, there are representatives here, please correct me. But the sign should be 35 feet tall, which is less than a typical freeway-arranted sign. It will be used to advertise multiple stores, retail located in the Austin Marketplace area. There was previously a billboard in that area that was removed, was getting to be a little unsightly and in bad condition. So there is a history of there being signage in that location along I-90. The, typically, we say the sign height shall not encroach the airport clear zone. That's not going to be a factor in this instance. It's not nearly tall enough and not in that area. Any additional permits or notices shall be required to be attained by petitioner. The petitioner will be required to get a permit if they're granted the conditional use permit. The location... I can pull up the, does anybody want me to pull this up on Google Earth? Okay. Okay, now I wish I had my mouse. Let's see, up here. Yeah, I might need to... Oop, I'm going out.
Yeah, all the records.
I use AutoCAD, so that also, and it's, it's kind of opposite of, of this particular program, so I want to do one thing and it does another sometimes, so. But, so here you see the, this is the Hy-Vee location here. And the retention pond is in this location. And the sign will go, I'm about where this tree is, maybe? I think I have the...
A little closer.
A little closer, yeah, a little more in to the retention pond area. Because this is the fence right here. Yeah, we walked out and looked at it. But anyway, you can see what the surrounding uses are that is close to...
So you're saying the old Hy-Vee building? The old Hy-Vee building?
Yeah. So Slavian Associates purchased the old Hy-Vee building, which is now known as Austin Marketplace. But yeah, it's actually, yeah, you're right. Actually, it is behind, I was thinking that Hy-Vee owns it, that it was behind their new store. But yeah, it's actually behind their old store and the ShopCo building, which I've looked at it a million times, but that's the, that's the location. Do you have any questions of the property or the construction contractor is here?
Would you be, who's putting, are you putting up portions of the sign or is it all Precision? You're doing it all? Okay.
Okay. So there's a representative from Precision Signs here, too, to describe the, the sign that they're putting up as well.
I was going to say, do we, we don't have a picture of the sign enclosed in our...
I didn't have a picture of it. It's just, uh... Do you have one? Okay, yeah, I'll put it up for you. So this, this will be...
Disconnected.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Okay, there you go. So this is essentially what it will look like in the, I can't, so the dimensions here...
It's 24 and not 35.
24 for the sign, but is there additional 10 feet for the post? Or is it all, is this going to be the...
We're going to get it up out of the slough, so it, once it gets filled in, it's going to be about 25 feet. But 35, what we're asking is to make sure that we can get down to the apartment.
And so I'll just mention for the, for the record that John Boyer from Precision Signs was just describing the, the sign. Any concerns or questions?
And that grid is there to display the tenants that will be in the marketplace?
That's correct.
I'm assuming the sign will be lighted?
Yes, sir.
So does this meet all the sign provisions of the city of Austin, then? Other than the conditional use?
Yeah, it does, but there's more flexibility when we're doing a conditional use, use permit for a freeway-oriented sign. It could be bigger than what's typically allowed. But it is within the, well, it's larger than the square footage usually allowed. So the square footage of this sign...
290.
Around 160.
Which is it?
Does it say?
Says 290 in the documentation.
The sign itself is about 160 square feet.
Oh, so, but the whole structure?
Yeah, the structure's more...
Yeah, and we would just look at the sign part, actually, versus the structure.
And if you compare it to like the sign that's for Ashley and Fabula, it's actually a lot smaller in square footage.
Is there any other questions for Holly or for Precision?
Interesting. The patch of land that's there to the right of the fence, kind of large square there. I don't have...
The rectangle?
Yeah.
You want me to?
Is that?
That's where the proposed cottage, or not cottage, cobblestone hotel would be located. And I did inform them that this sign was going to be put in in case they were interested in, you know, getting on the sign. And yeah, so I didn't hear anything back from them.
Okay.
And they'll also have their own signs, not necessarily freeway-oriented, but they'll have additional signs for their, their project as well.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion. And this is for approval or denial of a conditional use permit?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the request for a conditional use permit for this sign as presented.
And I'll second.
We have a motion for approving the conditional use permit and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, thank you for coming.
Okay, Commissioner Minow, can you do the last one? I lost track of my, here we go. Wait, I got it. The final public hearing will be to consider a final plat of Nature Ridge, second, northeast Austin. We will be treating this essentially like a preliminary plat and final plat together because we didn't get a preliminary plat for review. So your options, and Mr. Byram can correct me if I'm wrong, but your options would be to approve, deny, or approve with conditions. The area, see, I'll put this up on the Google Earth. Now I'm making it look easy, right? Let's see. Okay, so this will be the location of the proposed Nature Ridge second phase. The area is zoned R1, single-family residential. The second phase will be 13 proposed lots covering approximately five acres. The area surrounding the proposed subdivision is primarily single-family residential with the Nature Center directly to the west. This area is a second phase of a multi-phase subdivision plan.
East, right?
East.
Or, oh, yes, our east. Just going by my notes here, which I put west in twice, apparently. Thank you. Yeah, so to the east is the, the Nature, Nature Center. The plat has been reviewed by city staff and Austin Utilities. The, there were, essentially, there's only one non-conformity at this point. The lots in our, here, I'll put them on the, the overhead. These, just these corner lots on their southern end of this new proposed subdivision are the same size as the interior lots. They should be an additional five feet in width on the corner lots. The ones in the north of that and to the west of that are in compliance. But the, again, just these smaller lots are the same as the interior lots. The reason for the additional five feet is because there is an additional setback requirement on a corner lot. So instead of the interior lot, there's a total of 10 feet setback on the sides. A corner lot would have 12 and a half feet plus five feet, so 17 and a half feet. So they just have a little less room. So they just have a little less room to work with. But you could put a house 50 feet in width on that and still have your five feet on each side.
Can you, I can't read the dimensions on those lots then. What are the dimensions on those?
We have 69.38, or 68.38, 68.83.
Is that Lot 2?
Actually, they're all 68. That's lots, Block 2, lots 2 and 7.
They're both 68?
Yeah, they're both 68.
So...
So they'd have 18...
Even though they're the same width, you're still gonna require the setback be met when they position those homes, right?
Yeah, correct. Yes, correct. They're not here to explain why that is a big issue for them, but they...
Yeah, that would be my other question. Why not just plat it properly?
You know, I think part of it is just the...
Line up the street?
I think it did, yeah. I think that's it, just the street with regard to the number of lots that they wanted to do there. That's just how it worked out where the, for the surveyors to plat it.
Because they have two, two streets to, actually three to accommodate. 21st...
And that was some of the conversation when we talked about this.
Okay.
So here again, I can't read this, it's too small. But the lot clear to the left that's next to that 20B Lot 2. So it's actually not very deep as well.
It's a short line out?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just the width that require, requires an extra five feet typically.
Is that a retaining pond or something that's, they're working around?
Um, yeah, to the south.
Yeah, what it's giving...
Yeah, to the south of that there is. There's a big area with a retention pond.
But directly south is another lot, isn't it?
Yeah, that's a lot.
So that's this area here. Oh, wait, hang on, let me plug in. So the retention pond is, is right here. And then those houses would be here.
Hey Holly, just out of curiosity, for Lot 2, they can call, depending on how they orient the house, they can call the side, they can call the side lot on 14th and 1 on 20th Street, right?
True, yeah, true, that's a good point, yeah, yeah, they could.
They can pick which setback.
Yeah, if they oriented the house in that direction, it could be in compliance. Yeah, right, that's true. Yeah, I thought about that already, you're right. Yeah, so that wouldn't work very well. Because they have 25 feet in the front and 10 in the back. So 30, you'd have like, well, 30 feet, I don't know, to work with, with the house.
As long as they still have to meet the setback rule.
Yeah, they would still have to meet the setback rules. It just makes it a little harder for them to utilize those corner lots, you know. They can make small houses on them, though, I mean, there's...
Just out of curiosity too, did the, all the other lots out in that addition meet the setback requirements?
They would have, they would have to.
Specifically back on that far west corner where the road curves around, there's two houses back in there that are really close, you know, which ones I'm talking about?
Close together?
Yeah.
There is, there was one that we had a complaint on. I think they, they overshot their five-foot side yard setback by about four inches because they added a deck on. But yeah, the houses were set back properly.
I guess it's just a little concerning to me because that's a pretty small lot and I could see where they're gonna have a challenge getting a house that's gonna be sellable in there without them coming back to us and asking for forgiveness on setbacks. So in the, in the notes, it says that there's modifications allowed under three different conditions. A large subdivision, a small subdivision, and then unusual physical condition. So which are they claiming?
I...
Or is that up to us to decide?
Ah, yes, that's up to you to decide.
And, and we could note in the conditional use permit that they meet all setback requirements, right?
It would be a condition of the, of approval of the plat.
Yeah.
And that would be a recommendation to the council.
Okay, this whole thing's a recommendation? Are there any other questions for Holly?
The only other item that I would need a recommendation or a, or approval of would be the pedestrian plan, which is on page six of the construction documents. And it just shows the...
You unplug your computers, you won't see that.
Oh, yeah, yep. Just shows the sidewalk added to the north part of this section of the subdivision and then extending here across the street and then to the south to connect with existing trail. And the idea of that is we've now, so this is a new, newer ordinance that we've approved a couple of years ago and hasn't come into play because this is the first subdivision proposed that we've had. But it's our complete streets. Let me grab that.
Should it just be on one side of the street?
Yeah, yeah, and this is what was approved by our city engineer. So it was compromised somewhat between, there's always the cost of adding the sidewalks versus the walkability of the neighborhood, providing some safe off-street pedestrian corridor, you know, especially for people who have mobility issues or small children or strollers, things like that. It's just our policy now to get the pedestrians off the street. We don't want them to be mixing with the motor vehicle traffic.
Is that dotted line around those lots showing the 15-foot setback? So that, that sidewalk isn't gonna cost them another five feet, is it?
I think that's showing, I think that's just showing the public right of way. All right, let me actually...
Because right, it's 10 feet for the boulevard and then from the curb and then five for the sidewalk, so they're gonna lose another 15 feet on the north.
Configuration just doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Really, that lot is really getting tight.
It is, yeah. Usually the utility easement is a dash line. That's right.
What were those again, 68.33, those lots?
The property line is actually the, the solid lines that go around. The, the, the structures that look like houses are just proposed.
68.83.
So if you made lots 3, 4, 5, and 6, 66 feet even, pick up what, 2.8 feet, times four, that'd give you your 10 feet, five feet on each end.
Yeah, our minimum...
To meet the requirement.
Our minimum frontage is 60 feet, so they would still meet our, our minimum.
Why not just plat it to meet the requirement?
One less house.
No, it'd be the same number of lots, you'd just lose 2.8 feet on each of those lots to get the five feet on either end that you need.
Lots on Block 1 are 96 feet and larger. So I don't know if the developer would make mention the fact that you have very large lots on the north side of that road and further diminishing lots on the south side makes a big difference as far as sustainability or marketability.
Yeah, I mean, they're, you know, they're...
Would be eliminating one more lot and make them more like 95, 13 wide lots.
It looks like in Outlot A, in the existing plat, though, they already have smaller lots, kinda on that inside area to start with as compared to their, the ones across the...
Yeah, to the east on their existing, here I can put the...
To the west. Well, to the east side of the north-south street versus the west side, it looks like they have bigger lots.
This is an older area, so it doesn't show all the construction that's been done out there, but most of those lots are built on now. So they're looking at, you know, providing, I guess, a, a couple of options
Other questions or comments?
So to be clear, this plat is conforming, but it would make it more difficult for homeowners when they build to comply with setback.
It's actually not conforming. So the ordinance requires that the corner lots be five feet greater in width than the interior lots, and these are almost the exact same width. Just, you know, maybe portions of a foot difference, you know. So each one would have to add approximately five feet to be in compliance. And it's just those two.
Lot 2 and 7.
I think that if you think about what would happen if all of these lots were the minimum lot width, they're only 60 feet wide, and you had a corner lot that was still only 60 feet wide and it had the increased setback requirements, then you start to wonder, can you fit a home that fits with the neighborhood on that lot and still honor the setbacks? So the question, I guess, before you is, if the lots are closer to 69 feet to begin with and the likelihood is they're gonna all have a 50-foot wide or less home placed on them and can all meet the setbacks, does that matter? Because I think the purpose of the increased setback on the corner lot is to try to create neighborhoods that are consistent as far as house size and development area on each lot and not to create lots that are hard to develop. And I think what Holly's saying is, you still have room on these lots for a 50-foot wide house meeting all setbacks. So it is easy to develop them with a house that's gonna be consistent with the neighborhood. So does the rule matter under those circumstances?
And I guess, from my perspective, this is a smaller subdivision. It's five acres total. I think the previous subdivision was maybe, was it double? Looks like it's about double that size.
There'll be a different, additional phases though, right?
What's that? Well, I think part of it is just the, my understanding is that, you know, they need to sell a certain number to make their money back, but they're also hoping, well, they're also trying to gauge the market. You know, they don't want to have a bunch of lots that are priced too high or, you know, aren't gonna be, you know, attractive to all buyers. So they're trying to kinda diversify their potential customer that might want to locate in that area. That's my understanding, just because there'd be, you know, just a lower price for the smaller lots.
May I entertain a motion?
Oh, can I just, I just want to actually just, one more time, go over. So we would be looking at, or making a recommendation regarding the overall plat, the lots that are non-conforming, the, essentially, if you prove it as it is shown, the transportation or the pedestrian accommodation would be as shown. And then we would want the condition that the development agreement be signed and completed prior to recording of the plat.
Okay, is your motion to that affect or to send the plat back? I guess would be the other option.
Yeah, you could ask for changes.
If I make a motion, it's gonna be redo it, so it's right, meet the requirement to begin with. Which I assume would be a recommendation to not approve?
Yeah, so I would say that it would be to approve with the condition that the lots, the corner lots, meet the extra five-foot width. Essentially, that's it. And then the, yeah, I mean, that's the only thing that would be non-conforming, that the development agreement be entered into prior to recording the plat.
I don't see you trying to squeeze another lot out of that block as being practical difficulties.
So this would go, go to council unless they decided to, to continue it and make those changes? Or they can just ask council to disagree with the planning commission, potentially. I mean, because it's just a, it is a recommendation to council. It carries a lot of weight with the council. So it'll be up to the developer whether they want to move forward without making the changes and let council make the final determination or if they want to just continue the matter and make the changes.
I think just, I think just to be clear, so that you understand what that motion would be doing, is by saying you approve with that one objection, you would be approving things like the street layout, the connections of the intersections, the pedestrian sidewalk plan, the utility easement locations, all of which that have gone through city staff approval already. So there's lots of this plat that you would be approving. You'd be approving it, though, with the condition that that block be redesigned to meet the setback or the additional five-foot requirements on the corner lots. And then they would have to make that change, bring that back to you with just that corrected for a final approval. And that approval, if you do it that way and it goes through the council the way we'd expect it to, would go directly to the council with that piece fixed rather than coming back here, because you have already said that you approve everything else.
So that would be a, a motion to recommend to council to approve with the condition that these lots be reworked so that that requirement for setback on those two corner lots, 2 and 7, be met?
Yes.
It's lot size, not setback.
Yeah, the lot size, the additional five-foot width.
Well, they have to meet the setbacks, so...
Well, they would, I think they could, meet it even as it is.
Well, they have to meet the requirement of five feet wider than the other lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. It would be the width of the lot.
Okay.
Would be additional five feet.
Okay, I will make that motion to recommend to council that we approve this conditional use permit with the condition that...
The plat.
The plat.
The plat.
With the condition that lots 2 and 7, well, actually, that whole block too, be reworked so that lots 2 and 7 meet the requirement of being five feet wider than the other adjacent lots.
Can you include the development agreement?
Yes, I can. And that the development agreement be agreed upon, and what else?
Prior to recording of the plat. That's it.
Okay. All that.
Yeah.
Motion by Commissioner Luth. We have a second. Does everybody understand what they're voting on, or have any questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, I don't have anything further.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.